Buddy, apologies for. Collect not connecting. Little minute ahead of time, but um. A little trouble with Zoom today, so. Okay, our attendees to make sure. It's here, great. We see ECAT is on.
Recording in progress.
We go, great, alright, so we can um go ahead and get started, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Eastern School Committee Meeting of Thursday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is open to the public. Uh, excuse me, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom, attendance by committee meeting, committee members will be remote. And remote attendance shall count forward quorum, the meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public, we will take comments via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure you include your full name and address, we will do our best to read all comments and questions, however, we will. We will not read questions that have already been answered. Okay, so with that, we can move on to. The first item on the agenda, which is the schedule of payments, um so just recording for the minutes. That since our last meeting, we have approved, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Uh, we've approved ten warrants for payments and those are zero seven two S, zero seven six S. Zero seven nine S, zero nine two S, zero nine three S, zero zero two S. Zero zero four S, zero zero six S, zero zero eight S, and zero zero nine S. And as of right now, to my knowledge, there are no outstanding um warrants for approval. Okay, so then. Next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes, so we'll begin with the minutes for the July thirteenth. Twenty twenty-three regular minutes. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or edits on the July thirteenth meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
And roll call vote? Who's here today? We're all here, so this is regular order, start with you, Michelle.
Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
A star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Alright, the next set of minutes is the executive session from July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, any questions, comments, uh, or concerns, and if so, do you want to hold them for executive session review? Okay, so um Lynn, I do have one minor edit, which I think I can um give you here. Without compromising the uh confidentiality of the executive session, and that is. In the. Uh, the last line of the body of the minutes to change the term union to EEA. To distinguish from the other union that's referenced. So I think with that, um, does anybody else have any? Does anybody disagree with that minor? Clarification, okay, alright, so then I could take a motion to approve and release or approve and not release, would anybody like to make a motion?
Wiseman, so moved.
And would you uh, uh, to uh, release or not release at this time?
They seemed okay to release to me, I mean, what do you think?
They look okay to me.
I agree, they they reference negotiations but don't have any information that's not known, okay, I agree with that. Okay, so I'll, I will second the motion then to approve and release at this time. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Michelle, roll call vote. Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
And then finally, the school committee workshop meetings from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have any uh questions, comments, or edits on these? Okay, not seeing any, so I will make a motion then to approve the workshop meeting minutes from June fifteenth, can I get a second?
Durant's second.
And roll call vote?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Alright, so our next item on the agenda is um an out-of-state trip for the cross-country team, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. And I do see that Coach Souza is here, Kyle Souza is here. This is something that you've heard before, the cross-country team is interested in traveling out of state to Rhode Island. And of course, anything out of state, including Rhode Island, requires a school committee vote. It's at Goddard Park in Warwick, Rhode Island, September twenty-third, there's no cost to students. Bus and entrance fee will be covered by the athletic department, Coach Souza is here to any, answer any questions you might have about uh the cross-country. Uh, request.
Hi, so committee members, any questions for Coach Souza?
This is just a down and back file. One day?
Yes, it is one day.
Thank you.
Okay, so not seeing any questions, I know this is a very routine um request that we've received on an annual basis, so. Uh, with that, I will make a motion then to approve the proposal for out-of-state travel to the, for the Oliver Ames Cross Country Team. To the Ocean State Invitational in Rhode Island, can I get a second?
Durant's second.
And roll call vote?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Before the coach leaves, I would just like to add one item, if that's okay?
Sure.
So uh, Coach is aware of this, but I wanted to publicly share that I received a letter on his behalf. From Lou Tausi, the MSTCA Division Three Relays Meet Director. And it says, I'm writing as a commendation for Mr. Kyle Souza, your high school track and field coach. Recently, the May, and this is the Spring State Track Coaches Association hosted a championship event. Called the Division Three Relays. As at our school, as site director, excuse me, Kyle did an amazing job, his preparation, planning, cooperation, and professionalism was outstanding. Due to his efforts, along with the entire OA staff, this multi-school meet was a huge success. You are indeed fortunate to have this gentleman as a representative of your school district and as a leader of Oliver Ames High School Track and Field Student Athletes. We, of course, agree, we know that this also is extended to his assistant coaches. We thank Coach Souza and the assistant coaches very much, um not only for what they do for our students. But clearly being a great representative of Oliver Ames and EPS, and we will be putting a copy in his personnel file. I wanted to share that with you, and once again congratulate Coach Souza.
Thank you for your kind words and your support, and thank you also for approving uh this trip for the cross-country team. Uh, it is a great opportunity for them, and were we to attend some of the other meets in state, it would be limited in how many student athletes we could bring. So this allows us to bring a whole team together, it's a really great opportunity for the kids, so thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
Before Coach goes, do any committee members have any, any comments or questions for him?
Double congratulations.
Agreed, agreed, we look forward to um seeing the team compete this season, I know you've had a run of very, very successful seasons. So um, it's, it's always uh fun to follow along and, and see how the kids are doing out there. So thank you for all that you and your assistants do.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Alright, so the next um, next item on the agenda is to approve updates to the Oliver Ames High School Handbook. For twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Cabral? Oh, you're on mute.
My apologies, I will never get used to hearing that, gosh, sorry. Principal Kavanaugh is here, she has proposed updates for the handbook, twenty-three, twenty-four handbook, of course, these need to be. Reviewed by and are usually um suggested in cooperation with the school council. Ms. Kavanaugh has done that, and so she's bringing them before you for your consideration. They primarily include the addition of an academic integrity policy and restructuring of the code of conduct. I'll let Ms. Kavanaugh explain the information to you and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral, hi, everybody, nice to see you, thank you for taking the time to look at these changes, um as you know, we have a handbook. Um, review committee that we started, um, this is our second year, um, that's taking portions of the handbook each year to assess it for clarity. Um, compliance with the law, equity, along with a bunch of other lenses, um, this year, we included a member of our school council. Um, Cindy Boyce, one of our parents, in the committee, um, which was a great addition to support that um, be a liaison in communication between the school council. And the handbook committee as we made updates. Um, as Dr. Cabral said, there were two major changes this year, and our goal was to review the code of conduct and add something for academic integrity this year. At the start, so as you see in the code of conduct, the difference between the former handbook and the proposed. Is that we've streamlined the opening explanation um of the procedures, the expectations, and the correlation to the law. In addition, we removed a few things, for example, there was a heading that was just labeled behavior. Which we have a positive lens on the code of conduct and wanted to remove that. And secondly, there was a section that was called class disruptions and labeled that students will be subject to disciplinary action. Which from our equity lens did not make sense, as there are students who have behaviors that may be disruptive but are related to a disability. Or to something culturally that they need more of a learning experience and rather than um, or restorative practice, rather than being subject to disciplinary. Action, so those two sections, or that section and then the title of behaviors was removed. Um, we updated the cell phone policy to match the revisions that we did in the fall of last year. And then, as you saw, we had the addition of an academic integrity policy, previously, we didn't have a policy that outlined and defined what academic integrity is. What a violation looks like, um, and what the potential um consequences are for um violating that policy. So plagiarizing, using others' work as your own, um, using AI as your own work is part of that process as well. I'm sure you guys have been seeing in the news all of the information about uh, about artificial intelligence and its impact on education right now. Um, and so uh, you know, our goal is education first, and then with future. Um, violations of the academic integrity policy, that's when um discipline and potential significant impacts to your grade come in. Um, so uh, that's the, that's the update for this year, um, we're really excited about the handbook process for next year. Where our new DEIA coordinator is going to be working with us to attack our handbook from an equity lens. And those are hopefully the changes that we'll be looking at um next year. Forward thinking, um, our thoughts on the forward thinking process of, of continuing to revise our handbook. So if you have any questions about the, the changes that we made, I'd love to answer them.
Okay, do any committee members have questions? So I, I have a couple of questions, um, the. And this may have just been my technology issue, but the, what was in our packet was a link. And I actually had to get permission to view the link, um, that's just a draft of the handbook, it's not, it's not obvious. I- in that draft, what has changed, so I know that you just went through, but it's not super visible to us, so can we, I can see. Um, if I click on the academic policies and procedures, and there's an academic integrity policy, so that's. Um, that's new and.
Yep.
And, and looks good um from my perspective, what was, can you just um direct me more? More closely to some of the other changes, what section should we be looking at?
Yeah, I'm just going to pull it up, I um, the draft here, and I can give you the actual page number.
Okay.
Um, so. In the draft, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four handbook, if you go to page twenty-eight, that's the start of the code of conduct.
Okay.
Um, so when I talk about streamlining the beginning, these, this first um section here. Um, the language was cleared up and that, that heading of behavior was removed. And this first section has the same information that was in the former handbook, that basically states um. The disciplinary process that we go through at our school, the different options that we have, or consequences for student um choices that violate. The handbook, um, and then the actual outline of possible behaviors that could lead to disciplinary actions. And a listing of um the laws, thirty-seven each, thirty-seven each and a half, and thirty-seven each and a quarter, and where they fall. And then as you scroll down, the majority of this information is still the same, the major difference is the removal of that. Class disruption sections I mentioned, and the update of the cell phone policy to match what was rolled out. The changes that we rolled out in the fall of last year, every other policy is the same, but the order is a little bit different for, for clarity purposes, honestly. To make sure that things are grouped together um with common subjects, like attendance and absences are grouped in one section. And then um, those categories that fall under thirty-seven each or thirty-seven each and a half, like felonies, drugs, and weapons are in, in, in order. So that they, it's just more fluid and easier to follow.
So I. Okay, so I think um, I, I just want to make sure I'm not confused, so I think when we reviewed the middle school one. There had been at one point some updates to the thirty-seven and a half, three-quarter, et cetera.
Yep.
Language, so uh maybe Dr. Cabral, if you can remind me, or, or Mrs. Kavanaugh. Um, I think that had been reviewed by our council, right, at some point, we had adopted, so just want to make sure that none of these changes. Conflict with any of those, that previous information that we got from council, it's just rearranging the info, not changing the language, okay.
Any language on the law in this document, and if I, and if we did, we do always bring it to council before we even bring it to school council for a vote. To make sure that we have it.
Okay.
Um, accurate.
Okay, alright, great, so it was those two sections, so the academic integrity and code of conduct?
Correct, the only other difference is the addition of our um in contact information, you know, we, we changed obviously your position, Ms. Star. To chair in our handbook, and then we added the DEIA, the instructional technology coordinator, all of those names. Um, and phone number updates, as you know, we got a new phone system last week, so those, those are the only um other changes besides these two pol, these are the only two policy changes. Everything else is more informational in contact.
Okay, alright, great, thank you. Okay, alright, so um, committee members, any comments or questions? Are we comfortable moving this to a vote based on the info presented today? Seeing, go ahead, Nancy.
Nope, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four OA handbook.
Durant's second, great, alright, and roll call vote?
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yeah.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh.
Thank you all very much for having me.
Thanks. Okay, alright, so next up, we have a series of contracts, so Dr. Cabral?
We have uh six contracts in many different areas for your review, uh first, three are facilities. And so Director of Facilities, David Twombly, Twombly is here, excuse me, we then have the NRT contract. Which is curricular, so Mrs. Pruitt will discuss that, and then the last two will invite the Finance Director. Ms. Starjevsky, Starjevsky to join us, but uh as I stated, we're starting with the first three, with Director Twombly. Please take it away.
Alright, how is everybody doing tonight? So hopefully this isn't, uh, doesn't take too long. So um, I thought Julie Le Duke from SMMA, who was the winning bid for the uh OPM project. On this security project, would be here, but it looks like.
She's here.
Oh, she is here, okay, alright, I didn't see her on the uh, the video there, okay, no problem, very good, so.
Welcome, Julie.
Alright, cool, so anyways, uh, so we went out to bid um for Onus Project Manager Services, similar to what. Uh, PMA does with the Blan James School, and this is regarding the security upgrade that's going to occur. At Oliver Ames High School, the Richardson Homestead School, and the Easton Middle School. Uh, we followed the Chapter Thirty-B procurement laws, so we went out to bid, we actually had to do a request for qualifications. We ended up uh interviewing three firms, um, the winning, uh, the winning firm is Siamese, Miyani. And McKee Associates, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, but they pretty much refer to themselves as SMMA. If you're on Talking to Walter from PMA, or any of the other people that work in the construction industry. Uh, we also interviewed Answer Advisory, and we also interviewed ADK Architects. We created an interview uh committee, uh Nancy DeLuca was part of that interview committee. And uh, SMMA was the unanimous choice of the committee, um, uh Ethan was on the committee. And uh Andrea was also on the committee, Steve Legendre was scheduled to be on the committee, but unfortunately. Uh, he got pulled away the day we were doing interviews on an emergency, um.
So just for the public, really quick to, to clarify, uh Ethan is our systems administrator. And he will be responsible for the technology aspect of the security project. Andrea is our finance director, and Steve Legendre is the town electrician who works on repairs of our systems. Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
That's good, good information, so uh we also checked with Walter Hotley, obviously from PMA. And he gave SMMA a very high grades, SMMA was somewhat familiar with them because they've done some commissioning work here on the Blan James School. And uh, like I said earlier, we have Julie Le Duke from SMMA here um to answer any questions that may uh pertain to. The next step in the process, uh, we'll be going uh out to bid, or we'll be doing, creating an RFQ. For design services, which SMMA will be responsible for that, and they'll be working with the district to develop the RFQ. And we'll bring in some firms, uh some designer or architectural firms for the security upgrade. Uh, we hope to um, you know, have the bids in, hopefully uh either late winter or earl, uh early winter. Uh, maybe late fall, um, we hope to start the work next summer at the latest. And as we've talked about before, we'll do it by system versus school, so we may do the uh motion detectors first. And then we might do doors, or whatever system we want to do, but um, again, working with uh SMMA. They'll also involve some of the school personnel, such as the town electrician, obviously Dr. Cabral will be involved, I'll be involved. And we'll uh come out with a RFQ, and then we'll put that out on the street, we'll do interviews, similar to what we just went through. As far as picking an Onus Project Manager, and uh kind of go from there, so before I have you take a vote. I don't know if Julie wants to add any comments or talk about the process, and we'll kind of entertain some questions.
Absolutely, thanks for having me, and Dave, I'll correct you, it's Sims, Maney, and McKee.
Oh, sorry about that.
It's okay, because I probably couldn't have said it either, I had to practice.
Oh, you did, okay, good, I just called you guys SMMA, so.
That's what, that's what we go by, um, so one of the things that really um brought me to this project, I mean. If you ever have an opportunity to look in this advertisement called the Central Register, that's where we publish everything. Um, from OPM to design to construction, one of the things that drew me to this project is. I live in a town similar to Easton, um, on the South Shore, we just built a brand-new elementary school. And in building the brand-new elementary school, um, my SMMA was the designer. And so in doing that, you, you become a little reflective of what we have in the new schools and what we're missing in the other schools. Um, and not, not, not in terms of classroom size or um auditorium, but in safety. It's really important in this day and age to make sure that our, you know, students, young and old, are protected. And um, the same, we are having the exact same thing happening in my community, where the schools that were built ten, fifteen years ago. Don't have secured vestibules, don't necessarily have card readers, um, so the security cameras um aren't strategically placed. You see one in one corner and the other one way down the other end, and you don't know what's happening on the in-between, so it, it kind of drew me to this project. Because um, as a parent, first and foremost, I, I always think about the safety of my child. My youngest is now a junior in high school, but I remember when he was in eighth grade. And there was what they thought was an active shooter drill, which really wasn't, it was an actual um, a person who pulled a gun. On a police officer in front of the building, and, and they were sitting in the library, right outside it, watching it, thinking, oh, this is just. A show, and they didn't understand it, and the, the thought of that glass not being bullet resistant. Um, was a really scary thought, so I appreciate the opportunity to interview all of you and to win this project. I, I want you to know how much um the safety and security of your students really mean to me, um, like I said, as a parent. And in a community where we're doing the exact same thing, so um, our goal is to get on the ground running, right? Right as soon as we execute this contract, um, to get a designer on board, um, like Dave said, we're going to put, put together that RFP. Put it out for designers, um, and get the project moving. Um, it is going to be a span of probably a little over a year to get the work done. Um, and we'll have to sequence it in such a manner, um, because we do have some items that may be long lead times. So we need to be flexible with how um, we're, we're able to stagger this without the least impact to the people who are in the building. Um, and again, making sure that they are safe at all times with the contractors that come on board, we take that real serious. Um, quarry checks, making sure that people have, you know, the correct stickers on their helmets, so we know that they've been quarried. Um, having a person on site, um, on my team that knows all the contractors, so when they see someone come in that they don't recognize, they stop them right away. Um, so I appreciate your time this evening, thank you for inviting me here. Uh, Dave and I have been kind of going back forth for, I don't know, a little over a month and a half, um, and, and my team is real excited to get started, so thank you.
Thanks a lot, Julie, for um, for giving us an introduction into the project and to uh SMMA, so with that, I'm not sure if um. People have some questions, so I'll turn it over to the chair.
Thank you, David, so do any committee members have questions about, go ahead, Michelle?
Well, I have a couple of questions, Dave, is this going to be happening while students are in school?
Um, I, I kind of defer it to Julie, but there could be some work uh while students are in school, but obviously it would be minimal, it would be minimal work. And we would also work with the principal if we were to get to that, but the majority of the work, we try to get mo- most of the work done during the summer months. But I'll, I'll kind of let Julie uh expand on that.
Yeah, we call it a summer slammer, so securing those inner vestibules is really going to be key to be able to do that during the summer. We don't want to be disruptive when kids are coming and going, um, but for work that involves like running electrical wires and things like that. Most likely, we'll try and do that, do it during the school year, um, we could do it off-hours, we could do it after the kids are out. It all depends on um, you know, what the schools um really want to, to do. Um, like I said, we take real serious about the amount of people that we have on an active school while they're open, making sure they're quarried. Uh, properly, um, the quarry process is actually done through the town, it's not done through us. So you would submit um the paperwork to us, we'd submit it to um the contractors, and we kind of move that way. But there's a lot of work that will be dirty and dusty, and we don't want to do that while the kids are in, in, in session, so. In terms of uh strategy of how we're, we're choosing what to do, we are, we're going to. Obviously, first prioritize the highest need in terms of security, what's going to have the most um. Impact for security first, but as Julie said, some lead time on certain items is looking quite long right now. So we want to get that ordered and going as soon as possible, and then work around the schedule. Um, there are some things that we may identify that need to be done immediately, and we're going to do our best to work around that. Because that's going to be um, probably even more important than inconvenience. And just to sort of set things up for you, there are um, you know, some things that we're probably not going to explain. In detail in public meetings, for example, we're not going to say, this is our biggest, you know, X is our biggest vulnerability right now. We're working on that, but the lead time is about eight months, so we're not even going to start working on that until whenever, for obvious reasons, we don't want to say things like that. Um, and we did decide to work on systems versus schools, so that we could look at our most.
Um, and we did decide to work on systems versus schools so that we could look at our most vulnerable areas first. And and tackle that in all three schools at the same time. There's no sense in identifying something like that and just doing it in one school while the others are waiting. There's there's no um, you know, we, we, we understand a sense of urgency and so um we're gonna really try to prioritize by need wherever the um wherever the ordering will allow us to.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Um, yeah, hi. Um, thank you for that explanation. Also, um, on your, on the S M M A paper that we got in our packet. So the whole thing is eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, but on the back you have staffing rates. What, does that in addition to the eight hundred fifty thousand or is that included in it? It's, you know, what is that?
No, that's included in it, but sometimes people ask us if outside of our scope of work, if we can have say our electrical engineer um look at something outside of that scope of work. I give you the rate so that you know how much it would be per hour to have them take a look at it.
Okay.
So you have, you have our eight, our, our fee of eight hundred fifty thousand and that also includes um two estimates.
Okay.
Laura?
Thank you.
Hi, um, so my question is this, this contract is just to manage the project, not to actually do any of the work?
Correct.
Okay.
So as an owner's project manager, typically towns, municipalities, um universities, they don't have the bandwidth to manage a project on a day-to-day basis. So the ma- state of Massachusetts requires you, any project over one point five million dollars, you have to hire an owner's project manager. So what we do is we manage the design team and make sure the design is thorough and complete. When we put it out to bid, we take care of your bidding documents, your um your, help put your contracts together for the contract. We help ha- put the project up to bid so that the contractor is then hired. And then we s- we manage the construction portion. So we have a person on site when you're doing construction overseeing. Um, the way I like to tell people is what we do is observe and report. That is our job. We don't, we cannot tell someone to start work and we cannot tell someone to stop work, but we can observe and report. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. And I have another question. I don't know if we really have the answer right now or can give the answer right now, even if we do know it is. Do we foresee any of these upgrades to be um kind of structural or or, or, I mean, not build, not building out anything, but maybe like inside the building doing construction to make something secure that's not secure or?
I think the intent of what I learned from Dave is that um some of the vestibules need some extra securing. So it depends on when we go through the design phase. Um, what we determine in that phase is the best interest of the project. At this moment, I can't say that we're going to remove a wall or change out a door, but I can tell you that it will be investigated by the design team. They're going to do a full analysis of the building um during their feasibility portion of this project and they will come back with recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a reminder, this is a multimillion dollar project. We did go, uh, we met extensively with the town administration and did get um a, a commitment that this was going to be our priority for the next two years anyway, cycle of uh capital uh planning. And if you remember, our capital budget, this was a one point five million dollar request for the first part of this. Uh, and then should we need to go back for what could be a some of the same amount the following year, the town is already aware that this is our priority as a district and that we are uh actually limiting our other capital requests in lieu of the importance of this issue as well as support from Senator Timoty for uh funds toward this project. Um, so we feel confident about the funding of this. We are planning, we have been planning it for quite some time. Uh, but because it is so much and because it is such an important project, uh as Julie said, first of all, it's required, but absolutely we need the guidance of project managers and um it goes from this point, they help us choose a designer and then much like the school project when the designer then takes a look at everything that may be needed. They propose that plan and then, then we start looking for people to actually do the work of that plan. So it's going to uh, we, we want to move it along as quickly as possible and the first step, of course, is getting our partner, our, our management partner on board. And so we're really excited about, about this firm.
Thank you.
Do um any other committee members have any additional questions? Okay, I have one and I may be looking at I think I'm looking at an old budget memo, so I may be looking at outdated stuff. I'm actually trying to find what we voted on at town meeting, but uh I, I'd seen a note, uh, I'd seen a line item that had estimated seven hundred fifty for the O P M. And so it looks like we're coming in at higher than that, so just wondering or, or how's the funding working around that?
Um, again, we, we're beyond what we need in terms of what we have been approved for um between the earmark from the state and the capital expense. So not only are we going to be able to pay for the design, but we can get, actually get started with the project.
Okay, okay, great. So the, so the seven fifty was just the, the town portion, I think, in the capital budget and then additional funding coming from other sources? Does that sound right?
No, it's actually the opposite. The majority of the funding is coming from capital.
Okay.
And that seven hundred fifty thousand, that was basically our estimate. Yeah, that's, that's our best.
That was the, alright, so that was your es- best estimate out of the total, because I knew the amount, the total amount, gotcha. Okay, alright. Alright, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else then before we, let me think. Do we want to if we can do these separately, um, separate votes? Am I good with that? Okay, alright, so um, so with that, I make a motion to approve the S M M A contract. Um, can I get a second?
Well, I have a second.
And roll call vote. Do you have a chance, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumensia.
Alright, great. Thank you, thank you for joining us. It's, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks Julie. Did a nice job. I appreciate all your uh information. That was good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Alright, so the next step is uh Follen Waterproofing Contract.
Okay, so Follen Waterproofing, we're somewhat familiar with uh Follen. They're a local company right here in Easton. Uh, they've done a lot of work on the um, the town hall. They've done a lot of exterior work on the um the roof and on a lot of brickwork um that they've done over there. So anyways, we had some uh leaks, ongoing leaks for like the last year or so. And so we had a, we had, we brought in Gale Associates, which is like a design or architectural firm. And they kind of uh went through our Oliver Ames High School and they checked out the leaks and they've identified where the leaks were. And then they kind of created a prescription as to what we had to do in order to repair the leaks. Um, so we had to go out to bid, so we pretty much followed, once again, the thirty B procurement laws. And uh we went out to bid and we got um two bids. One was from obviously Follen Waterproofing. We got another bid from Gibson Roofing, who uh was a little bit higher than Gale. And we also uh gone and got a um, uh, we didn't really actually get a bid, but we got a non-responsive bid from Greenwood Industries. They've done some work here in Easton also. But uh we tried to schedule a couple of uh site visits with them, but they failed to show up, so that counted as one of our bids on this project. So anyways, Follen is going to make uh several repairs to the uh roof, but the majority of the leaks that we have are related to flashing at the high school and through wall, uh called through wall flashing. There's also some leaks on the actual roof and on some of the brickwork that's on the roof area. So again, Gale Associates identified these areas. It was four or five areas of leaking. And so uh Follen Waterproofing put together a bid. Their bid is fifty three thousand three hundred dollars. They actually were on site. Um, I actually met with them last week because they wanted to take another look in, at, at the brickwork because some of the bricks have to get repaired or replaced. So they wanted to actually get uh ready to start ordering some of those bid, just some of those bricks. So they were actually uh contacting some of their um uh suppliers to see if they had that style of brick uh on hand. So um, that's pretty much uh it. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but this has been an ongoing problem. Uh, we do need to get this repaired. It's kind of a priority. Uh, some of the leaks are near the, the elevator on the first floor, which is causing some of the ceiling tiles to get soaked, which then uh if we take the ceiling tiles out, that then becomes a um, a fire um, uh, like a sprinkler issue because you have to have the ceiling tiles in to meet the codes. So uh Bubba and Steve Legendre have worked very closely with us on this. In fact, Bubba uh walked Follen uh waterproofing around the roof and showed him some of the leaks in different areas. So um, so that's pretty much it. So if there's any uh questions, I'd be willing to entertain the questions, but this is a priority uh repair.
And we noted who Steve Legendre was. Bubba is John Cuzzi. He works for uh the D P W. He's a carpenter.
Yeah, those guys are like part of our office. Like, even though they work for the D P W, they're like, they're always in our office, they're always visiting, talking, you know, doing, they do a tremendous, I've always said this, but they do a tremendous amount of work for us. So they're kind of like part of the crew. So when I say Bubba, I mean John Cuzzi, but sorry about that.
So were these, oh, go ahead, Nancy.
When is this work going to take place?
Yeah, so this work's gonna, as soon as we get the uh contract executed, they're going to start the work. Uh, I did talk to Follen uh about noise and they said there'll be limited noise. They'll have quarries done. We'll work with Kelly to make sure that it doesn't interfere with any of the um students that are in the classrooms. They're also, we talked about, um, you're not going to get a dumpster. Uh, because they're a local company, they're actually going to have trucks on site. So they'll just take whatever brickwork that they have to take away, they'll just put it on the trucks and take it away that day. So again, we've um, Follen has done a lot of work with the town, working on the uh town hall. They do a lot of work throughout the state of Massachusetts on public schools. They understand the noise factor and uh all the um important things that go on with the schools. And they're certainly willing to have a kickoff meeting with Ti- with Kelly to kind of go over their um schedule of work and we'll, I'm sure we'll be able to work together and uh I think everything should probably, you know, pretty much work out pretty well.
Thank you.
Good question, though.
Any other questions from committee members? And was this uh a budgeted expense for this year?
This was not. We actually started this process last spring, so this uh money was encumbered uh at the end of last fiscal year. Just that it took a while to get the contract. Um, we got the contract like back in July, ba- then I was on vacation, school committee meeting, so it's just been a little bit of a long process. Um, so that's why it's coming to you today, but we um, this is from, this is funding from last fiscal year.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Alright, um, somebody want to make a motion then to accept the Follen Waterproofing Contract? I make a motion to accept the Follen Waterproofing Contract? Second?
Luca, second.
Okay, and roll call vote. Do you have a chance, yes?
Luca, yes. Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumensia.
Great, thank you. And then the next uh contract is for Perkins Eastman.
Okay, this is a, this is actually um a fun contract, I guess you could call it. So um, as you know, we're working on the Richardson Homestead North Playground and that's coming right along. We've uh had several meetings. Um, Green Acres is the landscape op- the landscaper that's on that project. They're doing a fantastic job and as you remember, uh, we hired Perkins Eastman and Traverse Landscaping because they did such a great job on the Blanche Ames School. We wanted to kind of continue right over to the Richardson Homestead School. So phase one was the North Playground and now we're into phase two, which would be the South Playground at Richardson Homestead School right behind the school. And so we'd like to um, once again, uh have Perkins Eastman and Traverse Landscaping oversee that project. And uh their price for the design work is a hundred and four thousand dollars for the South Playground. Uh, we have already done some preliminary design work with Traverse and Perkins Eastman. I think we need to have probably um maybe one or two more meetings uh early uh fall uh with them, just to kind of meet with teachers and meet with the staff and make sure that what we talked about is pretty solid. But uh we're looking to uh possibly go out to bid maybe in the fall because we'd like to keep as you may remember, they gave us a very um positive um uh bid back in uh last spring for the uh, for the current project. So we'd like to kind of keep them as a landscape architect. I mean, our landscaper, obviously we have to go out to bid for that, but hopefully they're the winning bid. But if not, we uh would go out there, we, we probably stop this work maybe uh mid or early spring next year. So we haven't actually determined that, but um we have had discussions about whether we would stop this project perhaps a little bit earlier in the fall, maybe like November. Or we've also talked about if we had to maybe stop this project maybe in March because um also we thought that we might get better pricing because um if you try to go out, if you go out to bid like in February and then you get a, a landscape company to come in to do all the uh the work, they may not give you as better, as good of a price to do it in the summer because they're working, they're working on all these other school building projects. Whereas if you did the work in March, you kind of missed that peak. So they're looking to kind of fill the gap. So we were kind of looking at it from a strategic standpoint that we could either do this perhaps in the fall, depending, or we could maybe start as early as uh maybe March. So those are all kind of floating dates right now, I would say. But um the first thing is we'd like to get this contract approved tonight, continue working with Perkins Eastman and Traverse. They've been great partners in this uh project. And um, so it's great, it's going great over at Richardson, over at Richardson Homestead and the North Playground. Like I said earlier, we had a couple of meetings with them and uh things are going really well. So I don't know if Alicia wants to add any comments. She attends some of the meetings and uh is familiar with the project also.
I think Jackie has her hand up.
Oh, sorry about that. I can't say.
That's okay.
Hey Dave, hey, thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing. Um, you know, I'm familiar with Traverse Landscaping, obviously. You, you keep talking about Green Acres too. How are they, how do they fit in?
Yeah, so basically we went out to bid, so Traverse Landscaping and Perkins Eastman put out to bid the project. So uh Green Acres Landscaping, they actually did the work at Blanche Ames, all the landscaping over there, all the uh site work. And so now they put a uh bid in when we went out to bid for the North Playground. They were the winning bid. And so they are working on the North Playground currently.
It's like great for the school building.
Yes.
Perkins Eastman is the architect, like Traverse is the architect here. And Green Acres is the construction crew, just like great is the construction crew here.
Yeah, so they're like a sub bidder of the Blanche Ames Project. Does that make sense, Jackie?
Yep, perfect sense. Thank you.
Do um any other committee members have questions? Michelle?
I have, it's very loosely related. What did we end up um going with for brown covering? So I assume whatever we're doing in the north.
That is um, that is still, you're talking about the
underneath the uh play surface.
Yeah, that's still, uh, we're still, that's still a problem. It hasn't been determined yet.
So we've started construction on the north without that answer?
Yes.
So we have, we, there is one project we are looking at right now.
Because um, so mu- the bulk of the project is the land surveying and preparation. So they have to survey everything, they have to do all the planning for how they're going to tear it up. They have to tear it up, which they've done. They have to level everything, they have to put in all the markers. Uh, if they come across anything like tanks or things like that, they have to take care of that. Uh, if they come across anything like tanks or things like that, they have to take care of that. So the, the bulk of the work is that. Um, if you remember, what, that we discussed at town meeting, only nine percent of the surface was initially going to be the poured in surface that you see in the Blanche Ames Playground. Only nine percent of it. And so what we've been doing is trying to investigate what else can be in its place under the language that was voted on at town meeting. And so far, we've only been able to find two things. One of them is um the wood chips, but it is not fully ADA accessible. Uh, one of them is corkine, but we've had it tested and it doesn't have the it doesn't have the same, they call it a HIC rating, which is the um, like a head trauma rating, head impact that the poured in has. And obviously we want it to be safe, so it was designed with that in mind. The HIC rating, for example, for the Blanche Ames pro- pro- project is uh an eight foot potential fall, that it would um cushion a child at quote unquote, an eight foot fall. So the designers have to go back now and look at every piece of equipment that they designed. And it has to be less than eight feet because the corkine will not sustain that type of a height. If it needs to be, uh, if, if anything is too high, they need to eliminate it from the project. Now, the plan was to keep the current structures. We are investigating whether the current structures are too high. And if they are, we would have to remove them. Uh, because the only thing that can appropriately be put under there is the port in place, which was there. They dug it up. So we had um poured in place on the RO Playground um underneath that play structure because it's um in terms of a head impact, it's the safest. And so that was torn out. Um, so we're trying to figure out now, can we keep those? Or do we have to pull, excuse me, pull them out? And then for the other areas where it was going to be, because most of it is hardscape or grass, except for that nine percent. And so the nine percent would be any place where there's anticipated impact, like swings or climbing structures. So we're trying to see if we can reduce the height. Swings are tough because even um, you know, you have to go to where a child can get to. And so they're measuring that to make sure it's under eight feet. Um, if it doesn't work with the current plan, then we will either have to put in the wood chips, which will make them inaccessible to people uh children, perhaps who have mobility issues or um, you know, a grandparent perhaps that's using a cane to push their child on a swing or their grandchild. Uh, or we would have to uh eliminate those features from the playground. Um, so we're, we're working through that right now, the best we can. Um, it took a while for the architect to find a distributor of the corkine, but she did find one. And so she's working with them to get, she was working with them to get the test, the HIC testing done. They did the HIC testing because of the concern that it doesn't have the eight foot um capacity that the, that the port in place has. So now we're going down a different route. So uh, we don't have an answer just yet, but so the most recent developments are either we'll have to put wood chips under it or eliminate them from the project.
I'll just add one, one thing. I think um Ashley from Traverse Landscaping, I think it was about a week or two ago, she received a letter, I think it was from the Kyleisle um Municipal Building Committee, and they actually have corkine at, on their playground. And the gentleman that responded, he had a lot of positive things to say about the corkine. Uh, but they have not actually, uh, I don't think Traverse was that familiar with the installation. And uh they had never really seen it, so they're actually thinking about going up to Kyleisle to actually check it out. But um we did get a letter from them and they talked very positively about corkine.
Thank you for that update.
Uh, Lauren?
The cork, um, if I remember correctly, the cork was the uh material that was gonna be very hard to maintain in snow because you couldn't plow easily, right?
Yeah, it's also um, it's obviously biodegradable, so it is gonna break down. It's gonna need to be replaced. Um, and it's, it's gonna be more um expensive to maintain, so we just need to be prepared for that.
Uh, does anybody else have any additional questions? Uh, I was wondering on, in terms of timing, I know you talked about MIA maybe could accelerate to spring. Um, do we anticipate the North Playground being done before South begins so that we can ensure that there's at least a partial play space for the students at RO?
Yeah, that would almost be mandatory.
Yeah.
You, okay, insure is a really uh big word. I will not insure anything, no. Weather, uh, supply chain issues, we all know and we've seen and we've endured that things happen. So no, we can't insure it. Um, we are anticipating, hopefully by the, by um beginning to mid-November, it will be done. However, we are, we're on one campus now. We have plenty of space. We'll just take the children to a different field. They did their field day um at OA. It was great. Uh, we've got, we've got space.
Okay.
Um, it may not be on a playground, but that's, they're gonna be perfectly fine because they're gonna end up with a state of the art playground better than any other child around has. So we'll def- they're not gonna not have recess. It's just where it's gonna be, but fortunately we have shared space everywhere now, and so the principals will coordinate to make sure they have an area to play.
Yeah, and also the um, the side field at Blanche Ames, I think that comes online officially the beginning of October. And then the other field where the softball field is, I think that comes online in November because you have to have like two growing seasons. So based on what the landscapes, landscape architect told us, those fields should be usable by like November. So um, like Alicia said though, there's so many, there's one thing that Easton has that a lot of school districts are enviable of. You guys have plenty of fields there that we can kind of use and people can move around. So I think that we all just have to work together for a few months while we build the uh North Playground or the South Playground and just kind of adapt a little bit. But it's not insurable.
Yep, great. Thank you. Okay, um, anything else before we move this to a vote? Seeing anything. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Perkins Eastman contract for the Richardson Olmstead South Playground. Can I get a second?
Right, second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wesman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumeth, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Uh, all right, is that, is that it for the ones for David? All right. We'll see in a bit. Okay, all right. So then next up on the agenda is the approval of the NRT, Natural Resources Trust of Easton contract. Dr. Cabral?
Thanks. Mrs. Pruitt's going to talk about the potential three-year contract with the NRT. That's our sheet pasture program, programming uh with our students for um science-related curricula. And I'll let her take it from you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. Cabral. NRT, the National Resources Trust of Easton, is a wonderful partner that we have had in Easton for the Easton Public Schools for a very long time. This predates my existence here in Easton. Um, and I'm not sure if it predates uh Dr. Cabral's, but they have been around for a while um and have been supporting our schools. This is part of our culture here in Easton, is having our students work with NRT. Um, they are, and they, they work with our students in PK through grade six. Um, what happens is each class goes to NRT. It varies. But for the most part, each class goes to NRT for one day of learning and then the NRT comes to the schools for a day of learning as well. Um, I want to highlight that during COVID, they were such a resource for us. They um really thought outside the box. They were able to jump online virtually with our students and provide some of this education. Um, essentially, they support um eighty-four classrooms in our district. And when you think about the quantity of students that they are impacting, it's really, it's really remarkable. And our students just absolutely love going there. They learn so much. They meet with, NRT staff meet with me. We make sure that their curriculum is aligned to what we are doing in our science program as well. They talk with the teachers. They, they make adaptations. They're absolutely just a really fantastic partner and, and our students really benefit from them. So this three-year contract does have increases in it. Um, during COVID, they actually helped us and stayed stagnant at their cost. They did not impose um increases to us because they knew the hardships that we were all going through at the time. Um, so this is reflective of an increase um over, over three years. Uh, so it's essentially, I, you know, they've been, they've been wonderful to work with and their increases are are also not just because of um the fact that they didn't increase in the past. It's really because of the costs, um, the increase in costs that they are ha- are having to undergo as well. So um you have the contract before you. If you have any questions, please feel free and let me know.
Hey, Michelle?
I don't know why, because I know that we work for them every year. That this hasn't been a question of mine before. So if we're paying them a contractual rate every year, my recollection from when my boys were in school is the students are also paying a fee to go to the NRT for programming. So what is this contract covering if kids are also paying? Does that make sense, my question?
The activity fee is actually for a couple of things. It's for NRT, but it's also for the buses for the swim program at the Y. And they don't cover the contract for either one of those things. So this is the district's portion of paying the contracts.
So they take buses to the NRT? I thought they walk. They take buses?
Not everyone.
Some do. Depends on the grade.
So I think is, does the student activity fee, does a portion of that offset this total cost?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So Michelle, they're not getting, NRT's not getting that fee in addition to this, this contracted amount. Is that?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
That was part of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Nancy?
Oh, just on the bus thing again, what was the new thing this year about the buses if you're going in town? Was there a charge?
So we uh negotiated a new contract with Lucini this year and starting already as of July first. Any in-district transportation is a set rate at two hundred dollars. Typically, there are two charges. It's a per mile charge and um quote unquote wait time. Now it's two hundred dollars. And so that's whether the bus is taking children from Blanche Ames to NRT or whether they are taking a local history class around the town for a few hours. It's two hundred dollar flat rate.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the committee? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the NRT contract for fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six?
So move to Luca?
Can I get a second? Thank you. Roll call vote?
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wesman, yes.
Star, yes? And Lauren, you're on mute.
Sorry, I lost my screen for a second. Uh, uh, Lumeth, yeah.
All right. And let's see. So the next item on the agenda is the Whitson's Contract Amendment. Dr. Cabral?
Thanks. Lynn's doing a wonderful job as usual. She already has Miss Andrea, uh, Miss Andrea Stojewski here, who is our finance director to update you on the Whitson's Contract Amendment. So this is to extend the contract for another year through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Stojewski?
Thank you. Good evening, School Committee and Dr. Cabral. Included in your packet tonight for recommended approval is a contract amendment to our food service agreement with our third party, food service management company, Whitson's Nutrition. Annually, DSC requires submission and approval of our food service management contract extensions. Uh, DSC has provided a letter stating approval of the contract amendment for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three. The contract amendment itself highlights several terms related to payment for Whitson's, uh, including an administrative fee of approximately seventy-nine thousand dollars and a management fee of approximately forty thousand dollars. The total cost increase over our prior contract is close to nine thousand dollars, equivalent uh to the eight point one percent increase of April's Consumer Price Index, which was applied by Whitson's. We did meet with Whitson's Regional Manager, uh, and they did highlight that within the current inflationary environment uh that we're in, their costs are continuing, continuing to rise in all areas, which includes payroll, supplies, materials, repairs, et cetera. There's also a deficit calculation included within this contract amendment uh that states a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, a hundred ninety-one thousand fifty dollars. Based on the universal free program extension for fiscal year twenty-four, we do anticipate the total uh school lunch program deficit to be lower than that stated amount. And uh we will perform analysis ahead of our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five uh fiscal year to review our current meal pricing and present recommendations to the school committee during budget planning early next calendar year. I'm available for any questions you may have related to this contract.
Do any committee members have questions? Go ahead, Lauren. Probably the same question I'm having. Go ahead.
Um, so it, from what I understand, um, school lunches are free to all students.
And breakfast?
And breakfast. Forever, right? Uh, so uh Governor Haley passed the law that in Massachusetts, all children will have free lunch and, and breakfast. I don't know if breakfast is included, but so is, is, are we talking this, like, is that in Easton too, obviously, right?
Yes. So we are offering free universal meals to all students next year. I think just reading through the governor's language, there's budget appropriations in this next fiscal year for the free school lunch program and universal meals will be free for all. They'll still have to go through the annual budget appropriation process to set aside dollars to pay for the free lunch program.
We, there are things that are laws that um in particular years are not able to be funded. So we don't want to say it's a given for every year. Uh, sometimes it just is not able to be funded by the state. And so they have appropriated the money in this year's budget, but to say that we are confident that it's forever, it's pending appropriation. And so that's, those are two big words for us because there's, there are laws about charter school reimbursement, for example. There are laws about circuit breaker reimbursement and when the state does not appropriate the uh funds to sufficiently pay that, we go without. So yes, it's a law, but when the state can afford it, they will give us the money for it. We are confident that this year it will be. And that's fortunate for us because we were anticipating uh potentially a almost two hundred thousand dollar deficit without it. With that said, if you remember last year, we were talking about this with the end of last school year, what the state and federal government gives us for reimbursement does not completely cover all of our costs. And so depending on what we are able to make in um supplemental charges for snacks or extra meals or extra portions, needs to cover that short, shortfall. However, we still have an issue with employment. We still have, our Whitson's provider has an issue with providing all of the staff We still have, our Whitson's provider has an issue with providing all of the staff that they need. They're working hard on that, but it's a, it's a universal problem right now for that type of in-person work. And so it's difficult to raise a a good amount of revenue in our food service program when not all of our options are open. So for example, we used to have this beautiful sandwich bar, salad bar. Those are very labor-intensive. And so we're not able to have them all open. We're not able to have extra lines open for kids to or enough extra lines open, particularly at the high school. We're about six people down at the high school. We have about six open positions there right now. And so, and that's just for food service. And so unfortunately, what it is we need to help build that revenue is relies upon people being there to provide the services and we're not quite there yet. So yes, it's quote-unquote free, but it doesn't mean it's of no cost to the district because of that, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for understanding what I was trying to say and I totally botched, but. So how does it work for when the state does have the budget? Do, do we pay and get reimbursed by the state?
Yes, but it is a set amount.
Okay.
And so it doesn't, it hasn't necessarily covered all of the costs.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sure. I see Jackie has her hand up.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on this now. So the breakfast and lunch are free. The government is, the state is supposed to give us a certain amount for that, but it doesn't necessarily cover our costs to provide it. So we try to make up that difference with either children getting second meals that they pay for or snacks that they pay for.
Right. A la carte items.
A la carte items. And so when that, when there's still a gap, that's what's called the deficit.
Yes.
And so there's a limit in the contract of how big the deficit can get.
That's correct.
And so what happens if the deficit gets bigger than what is allowed in the contract?
Then Whit- then Whitson's takes the loss.
Okay, so we don't take the loss.
Right, but we don't, the one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-dollar deficit in there was contingent upon it not being free.
Exactly, so the, the number that Whitson's provided us uh related to the free universal meals program is closer to ninety-three-thousand deficit. Uh, by the time we submitted this to DSC, they already approved it. They're aware that the governor's passed additional uh language, but that was the uh deficit at the time. But Whitson's has provided ninety-three-thousand-dollar amount, so it's saving us close to a hundred thousand dollars as far as the deficit goes for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Does any, any other committee members have questions? So I have a question. Is um, is the DSC approval needed because of this reimbursement function? So that a district doesn't contract with somebody wildly expensive and then expect reimbursement?
Yes, and then DSC is also checking to make sure that they're compliant with federal guidelines because we are receiving federal funds through the USDA program for the free lunch program. So yes, they're kind of back, that they're, they're checking the contract language, make sure we're in accordance with the federal guidelines and state guidelines.
Great. Lauren?
Um, for all, all a cart items, is that just applicable in the uh middle school and high school? Or can kid get more than what is offered?
Kids can get, kids, kid, oh my goodness, kids can get more. I, my apologies. Kids can get more, uh, but again, depending on staffing levels is dependent on if we can open the extra lines for kids to get them. Right now, our biggest issue really is at the high school as opposed to the elementary schools. So yes, there's typical in, uh, when, after they have their meals, then they open up lines for additional snacks or extra and kids can go up and purchase that.
All right, any other questions? All right, uh, see, I will then make a motion to approve the Whitson's Contract Amendment for uh twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes. Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumeth, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then um next on the agenda is a vote to approve ChargePoint EV charging stations rates. Dr. Cabral? Or Andrea?
Sorry, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So your packet tonight includes information regarding suggested rates for our ChargePoint EV stations located here at Blanch Ames Elementary. Approval of a rate is one of the last two steps needed before the district can open up use to the public for the charging stations. If the school committee approves an agreed-upon rate tonight, our last step is then to wrap up loose ends with the town on setting up the payment portal for the charging station. There are three pricing models suggested by the vendor ChargePoint.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I don't mean to interrupt. I didn't see that in the packet, so I'm wondering if you could share the document with us?
Uh, sure.
Did anybody else? Did anybody else get it? Okay.
I was, I was gonna say the same thing, Jen. I didn't see it in our packet.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know what is going on.
Yeah, so yeah, so if you can maybe share the doc, uh, we can take a look.
Okay, Dr. Cabral, do you, do you have a preferred method for me to share that? Is that just via Zoom on the screen or?
Would you like me to do it for you?
Sure, I just want to make sure I'm not overstepping in what I'm sharing.
Oh, no. That, you can do it if you have it handy.
Um, I don't know if I have it on my desktop right now, but I can download. If you have it handy, I want to go to my downloads.
Packet, and I actually don't see it either, but I know I have it, so if you just give me one second.
Okay, thank you.
Alicia, I'm adding it to the packets now. I thought I put it in, my apologies.
Okay, thanks. So that's in there. Environment, where is that? Okay, so um Andrea, which would you like me to show first? I have the current EV stations in the station configuration document.
Um, the station configuration document, please, thank you.
Sure.
Lynn, you might want to go on mute. All right, I'm getting there. You see it? There we go. Okay, so we have three different models that are suggested by the vendor ChargePoint. The first is the per-hour use model. The second is per-kilowatt-hour use. And the third is a graduated pricing option. And there's a couple, there's language in there of some recommendations as to why uh each rate might be a preferred rate or not uh for the organization. So for the per-hour use rate, one of the uh, some of the language there basically is saying that this pricing model encourages drivers to move their vehicle after charging is completed versus the second modeling option of kilowatt-per-hour use, that it doesn't necessarily encourage drivers to move their vehicle after charging has been completed. And then there's the graduated pricing model, uh, graduating pricing model uh that does have a uh almost like stair- step tiered that you can choose how many hours uh you might charge. Zero rate of a dollar per hour, two dollars per hour, and then a different rate for after, which is still a dollar per rate or a dollar per hour use rate, not a per-kilowatt graduated uh rate that's not supported by the vendor. And as these are our first EV chargers here in the district, we don't know yet what our ongoing costs of operation are going to be. Um, but we are being conservative uh by suggesting a recommended price using the model per hour used, where the driver pays per hour and suggesting that at that recommended range where they're listing a dollar per hour to three dollars per hour, at that highest amount for the recommended range of three dollars per hour. Uh, we did take a look and within your packet, I don't know, Alicia, if you um have that second handout readily available.
I do.
Thank you, for what is currently available in Easton right now through the same vendor ChargePoint. So there's two different locations. Uh, one is a uh location that is near a residential area and another location that is close to the ninety-nine restaurant in Easton. They have two different models. Uh, one is using Model One of the per-hour use rate, that first page there, at the two dol- they're charging two dollars per hour. And that second model on the second page is a graduated pricing model. And I might have had those, uh, one more page down, sorry. Um, that is a graduated pricing model. And so that has two different price points. One was, looks like a private company that's setting the rate and this one says National Grid, uh, where they're not charging anything for the first couple of hours. And then they're gradually charging, you know, at hour three, it's a dollar, at four hours, it's two dollars. Um, and then slowly uh rising that uh incrementally. So once again, based off of us not knowing what our ongoing costs are going to be uh to pay for electricity, maintenance, future uh replacement costs of these chargers, the recommendation to you tonight is to set a rate based on model number one, per hour used at three dollars per hour. Um, and we also plan to provide updates to the school committee on the charging station revenues, the expenditures and usage data. As we do realize we may need to revisit to adjust the agreed-upon rate at a future period of time. And so I'm going to stop there to see if there are any questions um for myself or Dr. Cabral.
Any questions?
I just want to say it's both, um, both flyers are now in our packet.
Okay.
Lauren? Okay, so any questions from committee members? Um.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Michelle.
And I apologize if I missed it. So this charge would be for public and employees. Right, there's not going to be a differentiation.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure. We have, to be clear, we have been asked by employees if this could be a benefit that we provide it for free. Uh, but again, just as Mr. Stojewski said, we've never had this before and we have very limited comps on this because there are very, very few of them in town. We have no idea how much the electricity is going to be. We have no idea how much it costs to maintain them because we don't know what the use is going to be and if there's going to be a lot of use or abuse of them. We, if someone crashes into one, we're responsible, we're owners now, we're responsible for replacing them. And we're starting literally with a base of zero. Uh, we don't have any money in an account for this. We haven't anticipated this as an expense. And so we think that it's reasonable to ask for the three dollars. And certainly if we find that there's an excessive amount of money accumulating for some reason, that's not the purpose of this account, then we can scale back the price per hour based on how much it's being used and how much it costs us. But we have no baseline data on that.
And um, and another point, when that, when the question came in, um, a question came in to me from a staff person and and I did a little bit of research on it and there, there are some considerations for employers that do offer um, that offer free charging and especially where we have bargaining units and things like that. It can get complicated where you're looking at maybe a benefit that some employees are benefiting from and others aren't. And uh, and there can be some, it, it can kind of get a little bit complicated. So I agree from um that standpoint as well. It makes sense to, to go with something um that's sort of the same for everybody. And then as usage patterns become apparent and costs become apparent, we can have some data to work on to see um if something should change.
Right, and it, it's not, it's not a universal benefit. So you, and it's not a matter of who has an EV and who doesn't. It also is a matter of who gets here first. Or if a resident is parked there from overnight and they're still there. Um, or if a non-bargaining unit member gets to it before a bargaining unit member. So it can get very complicated to your point, yes.
Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts or questions? Just scrolling through. Seeing any? Okay. All right, so um, does anybody want to make a motion then to approve the um, the proposal for the ChargePoint EV charging stations rate using um Option One per hour and going with the recommended rate of three dollars per hour? Or since that was a lot, I can make that motion.
So moved.
Great, can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Nancy and I do a same time.
I keep waiting for somebody else.
I am.
I'm gonna walk through these minutes and see how many times I second. I feel like I do it all the time. All right.
All right, and roll call vote? Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumeth, yeah.
Great, all right, thank you. Thank you, Andrea, for um, for the excellent presentations and Mr. Twombly as well.
Be late, have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good one.
Thank you. All right, so next up, um, introduction of Oliver Ames Athletic Director, Director of Technology and Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility. Dr. Cabral?
Right, so we have three amazing new team members. Ms. McDonald, uh, Mary McDonald, Meredith McDonald is our new athletic director. She does have a coach meeting tonight or did have a coach meeting tonight, so she's probably still there. So I, I'm not sure if we're going to expect her or not, but she is, she has collegiate AD uh ex- assistant AD experience. She has come in and hit the ground running. She is a former athlete herself, an outstanding and record-holding softball player. And uh, we're very excited to have her as part of the team and know that she's going to do a great job. She is very student-focused and understands that athletics is an extension of the school day and really thinks of the athlete as a whole, the whole child. And so it, we've had a great start and uh I'm sure she's still in her meeting. So that's, you know, she's doing her job and we appreciate that. We will make sure that we introduce you at some point. Then we also have our new Director of Instructional Technology. So Livia Ramus is joining us from Sharon Public Schools. She can, I, I will let her introduce herself and and her experience. So it's not awkward that I'm talking about her in the third person like I'm doing now. But we are happy to have both of these women join us. I'll start with Livia and say that we did make some changes to the Director of Technology position. If you remember, we have a current employee that took on the systems administration portion of it. That's Ethan. Uh, and so we were able to use the opportunity to add to the position. Since we took the systems admin part away from it, we could add a little bit to the Director of Instructional Technology, which is a more common role in a school system. Because Ms. Ramus has teaching experience, it, that's where the instructional part of technology comes in. So not only will she be doing the part, the, everything in front of the scenes as opposed to behind the scenes that, that John Souza did so well for us. Not only is she going to do that, but she's going to provide a lot of professional development, a lot of coaching and modeling to our staff. But she also has the background of how things, how, not only what a particular program is and what it does, but how it augments the curriculum. And she also has the data management background to assess whether it is actually creating advancement and achievement for students. So I introduce and welcome Livia Ramus.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Um, I'm so excited to be joining uh Easton Public Schools uh to tell you a little bit about myself. Um, as Dr. Cabral mentioned, I am uh someone who was coming from the classroom. Uh, my start in education was as a teacher. I have a master's degree in education. Um, I was an elementary school teacher, uh, spent most of my uh time in the classroom working for Brockton Public Schools. Uh, it was joy, uh, and I miss kiddos desperately. Uh, but moving along my career, um, I've had a few different um opportunities that have led me to this role. opportunities that have led me to this role. Um, most recently, I was in Sharon Public Schools as their Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, um, which also involved a lot of technology work behind the scenes. Um, and I'm very excited to be able to bring my technology expertise, my, um, experience with data, all of that, and my teaching experience, um, to this sort of new vision of this role, um, in Easton Public Schools. Uh, and I have to say, this first week, this is actually my fourth day in the district. Um, it's been incredible. Uh, the team here is incredible. Uh, and, uh, I'm very excited, uh, to be joining all of you. Thank you.
Great. So committee members, anybody have any questions or comments for Livia? None so far. Well, it's been, it's been wonderful to have the opportunity to have met you twice this week. And, uh, both of you have had probably, um, a very long whirlwind of a week. Um, so just for folks, um, uh, both, um, both Carol's and Livia started on their very first day with a late day attending the Superintendent Advisory Committee Meeting, um, and then Management Conference, um, this week. So I'm sure you've been bombarded with people and ideas, but all in, all in a good way. So it's been wonderful. It's lovely sitting next to you earlier today and, and nice to see you and welcome to Easton.
Thank you so much.
Then I will move on to Carol's Perez. Carol's Perez is joining us from the Sharon Public Schools. She was, uh, not only, not only does Carol's have experience in K-12 education, but she, um, also attended law school. And in this particular role, having an understanding of the law is really important. So the Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Accessibility is new for Easton. People may have a lot of questions about it. We're very, um, excited and anxious to share what that role is going to be, uh, as we continue to fine tune it. But the bottom line is that we, uh, have a commitment to ensure equity of access and experience to every single student who comes on into the Easton Public Schools. We want to make sure that regardless of their background, regardless of their demographics, regardless of their, um, religious affiliation or their ability, that they are able to freely move about our buildings. They are be able to access and understand our curriculum. And there are no impediments to them reaching their fullest potential. And so this includes, uh, you know, any, the reason I say having a legal background is important is because there are a lot of implications. Sometimes not being able to meet the needs of someone is a civil rights violation. Or it falls under the bullying laws. Or it falls under, uh, IDEA, which is the, um, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And so understanding how to navigate those systems is extremely helpful. And we're very excited as well to have Carol's join us. And we worked with her this week also in the, the venues that Ms. Starr talked about. And so I will introduce Carol's Perez.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. And, uh, hello, everyone. My name is Carol's Perez. Um, I have been working in education for about seven years now from, uh, being a MECO director to then serving as the MECO director and DEI director. Um, and now I'm here and what a first week it has been. Um, it has been wonderful to get to know everyone. And I, I like to think that we came right at the right spot. Um, so I'm very excited for what the year is bringing and, um, to meet everyone and, because I just build those authentic relationships.
Thanks. Great. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Um, so I got to sit with, uh, Carol's at the conference today and it was a delight. She's, uh, amazing. And I, I actually look forward to working, working with everybody that, um, came on board this year. It's going to be fun.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other committee members have any comments or questions for Carol's? Go ahead, Lauren.
I just wanted to say welcome to you both. Um, I wasn't able to go today, um, to the conference, but I saw you on, on Monday. And, um, I look forward to working with you both.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Any, any other committee members? All right. Well, Carol's, you're probably sick of hearing from me since you've seen me a million times at this point. But it's really, really good to see you. We're very glad you're here. Um, and, uh, I, I hope you're, I hope, I just, I just hope you have a great year ahead. I'm confident that we will. And again, just, uh, very excited to have, uh, both of you, um, here. And, uh, and Mary McDonald as well. I've had the chance to sit in a couple of meetings with her and the energy she brings into her room is like palpable. So, uh, so we have just a, a really wonderful slate of new leaders joining us and we're super excited.
Thank you both for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So next up, um, is potential discussion and, uh, possible vote relating to hiring. And this is for Unit A. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So for the, uh, first I'll, let me first explain this particular issue. We had spoken before about the fact that the current Unit A contract requires that anyone who's hired above step seven be approved by the school committee. We've hired close to fifty people now in the district. And I think this is the eighth one that is being hired over step seven or, um, potentially with your approval. It's not a top step. It's just over step seven. I do want to know, as with the previous positions, this is not a, a classroom position. Not that those aren't important or, um, valuable or that we want experienced people for those positions. But we intentionally budgeted for some of what we thought were going to be our harder to fill positions. And this is one of those. So it's a, it's a special services position. And the candidate has very relevant experience. I'm only including actual experience that's relevant to the position. And we did intentionally budget a little bit higher for this position, knowing that we were, first of all, it was going to be a very difficult position to try to fill. But also because we wanted to make sure we had an experienced person. It's working with vulnerable populations and we wanted to get someone experienced. And so we have a, an exceptional candidate who is waiting to hear what we're able to offer. And so I am looking for your approval to allow me to offer her a rate that is above step seven, but is commensurate with her experience in this particular area.
Thank you. Do any committee members have questions for Dr. Cabral? Okay. All right. So with that, I will make a motion then to, um, approve allowing Dr. Cabral to offer, uh, this, to offer a candidate, um, a rate above step seven. Can I get a second?
Second? Nope, Jackie. Get it to Jackie.
All right. And roll call vote. Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Star, yes?
Lumithia.
Okay. So for the second part of that, and this is for no kind of decision or approval. I just want to note that we had another position, not this one, where it probably, I, I want to say if it's not, it wasn't the most um, sensitive position for us to hire this year. It might've been the second most, but I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say it was the most sensitive position. And we lost our first candidate and we lost our second candidate because we needed to wait until school committee. And I, I'm really grateful that this candidate was willing to wait. But in a market where these people are, um, really hard to find, number one, and find, um, with experience, which is what we're actually looking for. The more experience, the better in certain roles. Districts are fighting one another. And our contract, first of all, it's a little bit different than other districts who are allowed to give sometimes steps that aren't commensurate with exact years of experience. But beyond that, they don't, they don't have to wait a week or two for a school committee meeting. And so, or even for us to post a meeting, there was one opportunity where I said, listen, I'll scramble, we'll post, we need forty-eight hours, we'll have a workshop. But there are people chomping at their heels trying to get them. And we lost two candidates for the same position. So obviously I'm not going to identify the position, but we went with our third, uh, choice, which is still a good choice. We don't settle, but has nowhere near the amount of experience of the first two in a really critical position for us. So I know that's not under your control. We're following the contract right now. But I do want to point out that this is not theoretical. We have actual losses in the district, uh, that have been very disappointing to us. And it is directly a result of this particular contract piece. I just wanted to note that because, um, we have real life scenarios of this. And it's not the first position this year, but the fact that it was our most critical position really, um, punctuated this for us.
So do, do we have? I don't know if you can answer this right now. Do we have an opportunity to revisit this sooner than the next negotiation cycle? Because I think it's a critical need.
Um, I don't know. It would require MOA and a decision would need to be made that they would be willing to have a conversation, to have an MOA. Uh, certainly not required.
Mm-hmm.
But we could broach it, but it's certainly.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I think given the hiring situation, I, I, I would love us to at least have the conversation.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you, Jackie. Okay. All right. So, um, next up is an update on the MASC Summer Institute. And this will be, um, Michelle and I, uh, making the presentation. So if somebody, uh, Dr. Cabral or Chrissy, do you want to go ahead and share the, the deck?
I'm just looking for it in the folder. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Oh, you found it.
I have it if you want me to do it. You're all set.
Yeah, I am. Can you see my screen?
Yes. Okay. All right. So, um, so Michelle and I attended the MASC Summer Institute the weekend of July fourteenth and fifteenth. Uh, Michelle was able to attend both sessions on Friday evening and Saturday morning. I was only able to join the Saturday sessions. But we wanted to share with you, um, some of the highlights from the sessions that we collectively attended. And, um, we have forwarded along, uh, one of the, uh, one of the sessions, they had sent us, um, the presentation materials. So those were already forwarded and shared, uh, with the group for your reference. So we won't get too far into those details today, but we just wanted to, um, give you an update on what we learned. And, um, if you want any, any additional details, uh, we can probably go through our handouts, which are a bit marked up. But I'm happy to share. So the topics that we attended, um, Michelle was able to go to effective meetings, um, and the session on the public comment period. Um, I went to a session on the role of the chair. And then we both attended a school district equity session. So Chrissy, if you want to move to the next slide, Michelle, do you want to go over the, um, you want to go over, do you want me to talk?
You can go ahead. I can answer questions. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Great. So, um, so Michelle attended a session on effective meetings. And really one of the things that was grounded throughout both this session and other sessions was that the overarching purpose of any school committee is the focus on student achievement. So student achievement is what should really be driving, um, our agenda items and all of the work that we do. So, um, the meeting covered the high level role of the school committee, which is to establish goals and act policies, approve and monitor budgets and hire and evaluate superintendent. Um, and, uh, and also, well, they didn't get into that, but there's also, um, of course negotiating, um, with, with bargaining units. So one, uh, I liked this idea that each meeting is a chapter in our story. So we should be thinking about what is our story? What's the story that we're telling throughout the year? Um, and so some areas of focus that, uh, or best practices are that agenda items should reflect monitoring progress against goals. Um, some best practices are scheduling and getting pre-submitted presentations and making sure that what we're scheduling for meetings, uh, focuses on students and student achievement. Um, some best practices are to share expectations about presentations to anybody who's part of the agenda so that we get materials ahead of time. Those materials are focused on the information that we need. Um, and that we can review the materials ahead of time so that during the meeting itself, they don't have to present the presentation to us. We can focus on, uh, you know, they give the elevator pitch for the presentation. And then we can focus our time on discussion versus having somebody read a presentation, which is exactly what I'm doing now. So I'm not following best practice because I got this out to all of you late this afternoon.
Can I just make a comment about that?
Sure.
Um, while of course we agree, uh, I would just say, I think it's actually a good thing you're going over it because some things are important for the public to see. And I think this is an example of that, for them to know the hard work you're putting into this and the direction that you're going. So I would say that, uh, be a little more generous yourself about that because I think some things are important to share.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, something that we've, we've talked a little bit about and we're going to do more formal work as committee, um, in the upcoming weeks is around establishing an annual calendar. And, um, this workshop provided a nice example of a month-specific list of what is due and when that can serve as a perpetual calendar guide. Um, and then topics that are not student achievement focused, there's some consideration of moving those to workshops instead of regular school committee meetings so that the regular committee meetings can again really focus on those student achievement, um, topics. And then there were some tips on how to fine tune what's on the agenda and how to effectively and efficiently run the meeting. So as we mentioned, presentations get pre-submitted. Um, and that we can use, structure the meetings to include subcommittee reports, um, on a regular basis. Some districts tie agenda items to superintendent goals. Um, we can consider using a consent agenda for things like minutes or warrants that are routine housekeeping work, um, that typically don't involve a lot of discussion or debate. And, um, many of the, many districts use time estimates on their agendas. So that's something that we can consider. It can be a helpful tool for keeping the meeting tight and moving along, but also for letting the public know if there's a, a topic that might be of particular interest to them around when they can expect, um, to, to see that come up in the agenda. Um, and then, um, overall, just communicating norms and operating protocols, both within the committee and to anybody who interacts with us. Michelle, was there anything I missed there?
No, not unless somebody wants more clarification about something. I mean, we kind of went into this session with people saying, oh my God, our meetings are three or four hours. And we could all identify with that. And, you know, just kind of how to, to succinct it and make it, you know, time-specific, concise, effective, student-driven, and take all the other stuff and kind of find different ways to address that in different, um, avenues and venues.
Great. So we can move to the next slide then. Um.
Jackie answered, hand up. I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jackie.
No, I think a lot of these.
No, I think a lot of these are really great ideas. Are you thinking of like getting together a couple of people to work on how to change things, or what, what are you, how are you, how are you thinking of getting together to implement this?
Yes, so what I'd like to do is schedule a workshop um for us as a committee to go over setting goals for ourselves um and using uh, using that and our, our existing goals and understanding that as a district, the district is wrapping up its strategic plan, and um we just finished a review cycle with Dr. Cabral, and we'll be looking forward to her goals. So there are a few things happening at the same time, but we can, at the very least, as a committee, get started on establishing our own goals. Um, I know that um Lynn does keep um, uh has a schedule of what needs to be done when throughout the year. So I think we can pretty quickly work through um, through getting some concrete work done um pretty quickly a- around getting the framework of a perpetual calendar, et cetera. And then, yeah, then maybe we could do a, a, a subcommittee or a smaller working group to go through things like, you know, trying out ways to restructure the agenda if we, if we would like to proceed with some of those changes as well. But I think, I, I think for me, I know something that I really, really want to do um is, is just get that annual agenda in place to make sure that we're covering all of our regulatory and reporting requirements throughout the year, um but also making sure that we're scheduling time to uh, to measure, to just get progress updates and measurement of the goals. You know, we have these wonderful school improvement plans, we see them once a year. We could easily schedule some checkpoints along the year where we ask for reporting or updates on X, Y, or Z, instead of having those improvement plans be something that we only visit, you know, only have in our line of sight or focus once a year.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie, I can share the PowerPoint, not the PowerPoint, well, actually, I do have it in PowerPoint, but the handout from that session.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
Yep, great. Um, the other uh session that Michelle attended was on public comments. So MASC provided a legal update on the MAS SJC decision regarding public comment. This is known as the South Borough case, and this is guidance that we had already heard about from our own attorney, and we had used um that, that guidance to update our public comment policy in July of last year. MASC has um updated its own model policy, and ours aligns very closely with them. So I don't think we need any additional work here. Uh, I, I think this was more for just letting committees that haven't gotten this update already and haven't done their policy changes already to know about that. But then um Michelle also explained that they had, that it was, there was some valuable time spent workshopping different scenarios that can occur in meetings, um so that folks are prepared for some of the, some potentially challenging situations that can arise.
And to add on to that, kind of, and we'd have kind of um redone our norms for public comments, but really making sure that, that we're following those norms and those are clear to all parties involved.
Um, next up, I attended the Role of the Chair workshop. This presentation covered a lot of the content that's already in the MSAC Role of the Chair um uh materials, and in our group, we have the probably not common situation where three, three of the five members of the committee are former chairs. Um, so, so uh we have an extremely well-informed group um to begin with. But one of, um, so they, they covered some of that material, but I found that the workshop format itself was valuable in that we spent a lot of time focusing on activities that happened before, during, and after, or in, in between meetings. In particular, um, we looked at agendas that were from three different school districts, and they were all very different in how they were organized and how the materials were presented. So in the workshop format, we got a chance to kind of share our thoughts on what we liked or didn't like about different agenda uh presentations, but I think it's always valuable to see what other districts are doing um and see if we can steal some ideas from them to help improve um making our, our agendas drive more efficient meetings and meetings that are helpful to the public, uh but also cover everything that we're required to recover. Um, and then uh, and then we discussed again just operating protocols and communication between meetings, which align with the practices that we have in place already. So for example, the chair is the spokesperson for the committee, um uh liaison to the superintendent and vice versa. So things that we are already doing, and then just sort of a general discussion on the importance of having a presence in the community, a positive presence in the community, and a little bit of debate on how social media can be used uh or avoided um in the role. So it was, it was helpful for me, I thought it was, it was an interesting discussion and tied in a lot with the running effective meetings material that um Michelle learned in her workshop. Okay, we'll move on to the last one. Um, so uh equity audit, the highlights of this, but we did, I did share um the full presentation um to the committee members and Dr. Cabral and Mrs. Pruitt, so that you all have that and can take a look. And if you have any questions, um you know, please reach out to me um directly. And then in the workshop itself, we reviewed uh some of the key topics from that presentation, such as defining what an equity audit is, a snapshot of an equity audit in the typical uh timeline and process. So it was interesting um for us, especially where we are in that journey in Easton, having just hired um a DEIA director and knowing that assessing where we are will be a key part of her role. So um good information, and from what I understand, aligns um pretty closely with what MAS Association of School Superintendents has been working on as well. So we're all on the same page. Um, it was a, it was a good workshop, and then we had just a roundtable discussion of equity audits among different school committees and ex- different experiences of school committees. Um, some who are pretty far along in the process and some who are really, really just beginning the journey or, or haven't even, can't even really say that they've begun. So um, so we are, let's say, you know, it's, it felt like we were kind of in the, in, you know, pretty far along in the spectrum. But again, having just hired a professional into that position will get much, much further along the spectrum of best practices, so. So any questions about? Any of the rest of the materials? Seeing any? Okay.
I do want to thank you very much for going. Uh, this, this is a valuable resource. MAS or MAS Association of School Superintendent, uh, school committees does work a lot with MAS, the Association of School Superintendents, and it's, it's really helpful, not just to the committee, but to all of us, if you are well-informed and educated about different things that um, you know, we try to give information on things, but you really should hear it from your own association. And we can't offer the perspective of other, other school committees uh like you can get from them. So they have so many good resources and their workshops and their conferences are very good. So we appreciate you attending because it's extra time of yours, in addition to your work with the school committee, that people don't realize goes on behind the scenes, and there's a lot of responsibility with your role, and it involves a lot of investment, and so we really appreciate how obviously, seriously, all of you take this, and uh it's our life, so it means a lot to us. So thank you.
Very welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Oh, thank you. That was mostly Michelle telling me. Shell tells, I made it pretty. Yay for templates. Alright, okay, great. So next up on the agenda, um public comment, and I do not see anything in our queue.
There's nothing at this time.
Okay, great. Alright, so superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Okay, I do have a few. Uh, it's been a little while, and it's been really busy. So our management conference we had with our entire leadership team was great, focusing, focus on equity, advancement, and accountability. We're going to be rolling out a lot of things to our staff this year about that. And it was just a great con- concentrated amount of time with a laser focus on some very important direction that we're looking to take with the staff this year. So I, I believe, I certainly got the impression that everybody left with a lot of energy and excitement about the coming year, and we are just very uh hopeful about the direction that we're going in a lot of different areas, and I hope the public will see that as well. Our hiring is now thankfully down to a trickle. However, there are some people who are last-minute getting positions, in particular, some of our paraprofessionals or interventionists who have been looking for teaching positions that perhaps we haven't had a position that fits their area of certification open. And so this time of year is when other districts may be hiring somebody who doesn't have experience but might be new to the field and is promising, and hopefully if they've worked with us for any amount of time, they do have good experience. And so we're very happy to see them get those opportunities, but it does mean that we're filling some interventionist, paraprofessional roles. Um, occasionally a, a Unit A member, but that's, that's very infrequent, but of course, that happens too. And now we're moving on to our new staff orientation. We have two days for staff members who are new to the profession, and then we have one day for people who are joining us from another district that are experienced. There's still an orientation required when you're going to a new place. And so we have a great program run by Krista Marani, uh English Department Chair at the high school, and that's coming up Wednesday and Thursday. We are now live with our interface program. That is through William James College, that is the mental health resource that we've been talking about. We're in partnership with the town of Easton, so any resident of Easton, including, of course, all of our children's families, can now be referred to this service for mental health referrals. A clinician, a licensed clinician um feels the phone calls, does a clinical intake based on the acuity of the need, um whether there is an immediate emergent need that needs to be taken care of, or whether they just need to be put in touch with proper resources. It is a chronic issue, not just across the state, but across the country, that mental health providers are very few and far between. And now, after COVID, where so many of them were able to work from home and reduce their overhead costs, so many of them are doing that now, and certain situations just are more successful if they're in person or if they're in a child's home, for example. And so finding service providers has been a real challenge. Our therapeutic staff is amazing, and they're still going to provide wraparound services and, and provide information to parents about how they can access resources. But when a waiting period is eight, ten months, which has happened in some cases, we now have a much bigger bank of professionals to tap into. So a clinician gathers the information, not just on the need, but also the insurance that a family has or lack of insurance for mass health. They discuss whether they prefer in-person or not, whether they, virtual is okay with them, if they have transportation, how they might be able to um get a therapist near mass transit, for example, or something of that nature. They also talk about whether they prefer a male or a female, what kind of issue it is, so they can make sure that they find an appropriate specialist. And then they have a pool of over ten thousand vetted licensed professionals that they can then send this client profile to and ask if they have space in their practice for this family or this individual. And then they report back to the family and connect the family with the resource. So they're just a referral service, they don't provide the actual services to the, to the client, but it, it gives us a much bigger opportunity, especially if people are willing to do virtual therapy sessions, for example. We can tap into therapists from across the country. So the interface staff make sure that a connection is made. They then check in with them a few weeks later, make sure they actually attended, or if they would like to try a different professional. If they have attended therapy session, they make sure that it, the client feels that it's working successfully. If not, they try again, and they try to match them up with another person based on the concerns. And so they report to us twice a year, it's completely anonymous, the report, but they do report to us the number of phone calls they get, they get the number of placements they successfully make, whether the client continues with the provider, and also uh a brief description of the type of service, because if we, for example, it, it's very helpful data for us as a district to know, are we having a huge spike in uh eating disorders or suicidal ideation or violence in the home or something else that we might be able to provide our own professional development to our families or to our students of particular um grade span? So that's the only kind of scrub data that we're going to be receiving. And like I said, the town's also on board, and we're really happy about that because it's very rare that a child's area of concern is isolated just to the child. They may be having, for example, experiencing violence in the home, in the home, or a contentious divorce. Now, not only is the child able to be connected with services, but the family as well. And that is going to provide a higher level of service where we have such a dearth of resources available in this area. So we're very excited about that. The town, if you go on the town website, there's a link to that. Our website, which I'm going to talk about next, is coming online soon, and that information will also be available to parents there. That went live August first, so that is already open for people, they can make use of it at any time. The next item is the website, we have a mock-up, the staff has been, the administrative staff has been looking at it. We're fine-tuning some areas, and we're getting ready for launch in September. We're very happy about the way that it looks, the information it contains. Our goal is to get people the information they're looking for within three clicks. So hopefully we'll accomplish that. It is going to go out, uh like I said, in September, and we expect that there will be issues, and we expect that there will be better information that we can provide, and we'll be updating for the new school year, and we'll be doing all of that, so we hope people will be patient. But I'm pretty sure that from the start, they're going to see that it's a better product, and so we're happy to share that.
Dr. Cabral, can I, um, so you're saying it's going out in September, but school starts in August. Do, should it go out before school starts, or is it something like that?
It starts August twenty-ninth, we still have our current website, and we're still putting information on it next school year. But the developer has given us a list of things that they need, they go through every single thing. Like if there's a link that's five clicks in that's not working, they'll ask us for an update to that link. So we're just throwing a ton of information at them, and they're trying to get ready in time for September.
Thank you.
Sure. So it's, it's actively being worked on right now. Uh, something I wanted to point out about facility use, we have some, a, a, a lot of new spaces that are online. We've always had a procedure for facilities use, but people may not be aware of it because we never really had people renting or communities, you, or community organizations using spaces in our elementary schools, for example. And then relatively soon, we're going to have brand-new tennis courts, outdoor basketball courts, and pickleball courts, for example. We have new fields, we have new playgrounds, and people are going to want to make use of them, and we want people to make use of them. So I just wanted to point out that we are going to have our Director of Operations, David Twombly, who you saw this evening. He's going to have his own page on the website, it's up there now under his uh section of facilities, but it's going to be on the new website as well. Uh, contacting him will start the process of making sure we, we reserve spaces. We actually have a technology for that, we have software called School Dude, where we keep track of what spaces are being used by whom. Mr. Twombly is well-versed in what an organization may have to pay if they're for-profit, whether they need insurance depending on the activity, um those kinds of things. If there are contracts that need to be signed, if quarries need to be done, done, if they need anything from us in terms of technology, or if they need um certain furniture in a space. And so we're going to use that same procedure. The one thing I do want to point out, which is a big question I've gotten particularly about the pickleball courts, is when they can use it, and it's, it's critical that people understand that we And it's it's critical that people understand that we are an operating school system every day. We have four thousand little residents here that are within a very small condensed area. And security is number one for us. And so the courts in particular are about a hundred feet away from the front door of our high school. Uh the Blancham playground, less than a hundred feet away from the front of our school, our elementary school. And all of them are centrally located within all of our schools. So we what we don't have is public use of those facilities during the school day. Aside from the fact that our PE programs are gonna be using them, athletic teams are gonna be using them. We even use some of them for playgrounds, space and activities. As soon as school is done and the and the buses are out, those are open to the public if they aren't already reserved, for example, by the athletic department or by community rep. And again, I just wanna punctuate, a big part of that is not only the use, but also the security. So it's very possible somebody could drive through campus and see an hour of time where a particular area is not being used and feel as though that's unfair and that a a league or a group should be able to go there. But we wanna make sure that when our kids are outside or they're traveling from school to school that there aren't a lot of adults that we haven't queried or don't know who they are or where they're coming from walking around the campus. Um and so while it's public space and people can reserving space for uh large groups of people or even a couple of people to spend a long amount of time there. Uh we we just don't have the capacity to be checking on who people are and if it's appropriate for them to be around kids or even to be watching per se their activity and making sure they're they aren't going around and trying to get into schools. And so we're hoping that people understand um understand that need. Uh but outside of that, after school, weekends, all summer long, we are absolutely happy to welcome people and and love seeing them use it. I I can't tell you how much joy it brings me to walk out of the office. Whatever the time of night I walk out of the office and see families enjoying the playground, for example, it's just awesome. Lauren?
Sorry, I lost my mouse. Um, my question is, um can um can it be re- reserved after school for for a series of of for can a league reserve it when school's not in session um on a like a on a cycle? Like and what happens if the school, if a team needs it? Does the league get pushed off because the school needs it?
Well, we try not to have conflicts like that. Um MIAA schedules are done in advance. The athletic department does go in. For example, all our for fall sports venues have been booked by the athletic department. Uh the schools are put it, they put in all of their ice cream socials and open house nights and things like that for spaces like cafeterias or auditoriums. They're uh part of David Twombly's process when he does get a, because we have an actual facilities use form. And part of the process when David Twombly gets the facilities use form, of course, his first thing is to look at School Dude, but his second thing is to actually call the school. And say, we just wanna make sure this space is being asked to be used for this date. Did you just not get the chance to put that in or are you all set? So we try to mitigate any of those conflicts. Uh depending on what it is, we try to offer a different site either to the school group or to the organization that might be asking to use the R O Gymnasium. We might say, well, we have similar and actually we do this even if it's booked. We say, you know what, we don't have that available, but we now have the Blancham's uh gymnasium. Would you come like to come take a look at it and see if it suits your needs? That kind of thing. We try to accommodate everyone as much as possible. And then in terms of facilities, I just wanna remind everybody, our ribbon cutting is Sunday. Ten AM, we're going to have a little ceremony and ribbon, actual ribbon cutting. And then uh from eleven to one, about eleven to one o'clock, we're gonna have a ton of fun activities. So we really encourage everybody to come. Jackie Wiseman, as the School Planning Committee Chair, has been running this rib- ribbon cutting uh planning process and there's so much going on. We're very excited about it. It's a great opportunity to bring a family. It doesn't have to be your own children. You wanna bring grandchildren, nieces, nephews. We encourage all residents to come out and check out your space. Check out the outdoor spaces, um have your kids uh or kids you know, come and use the playgrounds. We're gonna have uh balloon artists, we're gonna have face painting, Community Rec is organizing a ton of um lawn games, uh family yard games. We have food trucks that people can purchase snacks, food, coffee, ice cream. We have, are gonna have music playing. It's just gonna be a great family day. And if it rains, we're gonna hold it in the gymnasium, but it looks like it's gonna be okay and we're hopeful about that. So we hope everybody will join us. We're also, a big part of this is we're giving tours. So if you have no littles in your life right now, doesn't matter. We want you to come. We want you to see what is um public property. But we also want you to come and take a tour of our building. We're hopeful that people will be surprised about how many adult friendly spaces we have for organizations or clubs or um reunions or, I mean, we have really great spaces now that we can offer and we have some ideas about how people can make use of them. They're very intentionally designed to be grown up friendly and not look like a a little child's space uh while providing areas that are really engaging to kids and exciting for them. So both outdoors and in, we have spaces for everybody of all ages. So we really are encourage you to come and take a look. If you can't make it, then we also recently had ECAT come and did a video. I'm not sure if it's available online yet, but we did an entire tour of inside and outside the school now that we're pre- pretty much mostly done, few punchless items left. And so you can always go on and check the tour out as well. And we put in all new phone systems this summer. The only school that might be changing in September is the middle school. We just weren't well, it's not that we weren't able to get it done, but again, supply chain issues and there weren't enough telephones. And so we had to order extra telephones, but we're all gonna be on the same system. So literally now that we're on one district, if we call one another in different schools, uh we just push an extension in order to get there. And so it's going to be uh hopefully easier for the public to use it as well. The extensions are gonna be very similar to one another. We just do apologize for the middle school. They're gonna be changing extensions after the school year starts, but hopefully soon after the school year starts. Everybody else, if your extensions for schools other than Blancham's aren't working, it may be because you don't have the new extension. Those are gonna be available on our new website. And reminder to everybody, our first day for staff is August twenty ninth. Our first day for students is August thirtieth. Our first day for kindergarteners is September first and our first day for pre-kindergarteners is September sixth. And now I think I'm Thank you for your patience.
Great. Thank you for all the info. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Cabral before we move on to assistant notes? Okay, all right. So next up is Assistant Superintendent Notes, so this is Pruitt.
You'll actually be surprised. I actually don't have a lot tonight. I do just wanna let you know that I did start my doctoral program this summer um in the summer in July, so I thank you very much for your support. It's actually fantastic. I'm really enjoying it. Got a great group and are learning things that are extremely relevant to my work and our work in the district. So I just wanna thank you and I'm excited to bring all of it to Easton. Uh the only thing I really wanna, I need to report out on is um our C program, our Summer Enrichment Academy was so successful this year, as it as it is every year, but it keeps growing and we keep getting more and more people interested. I think the word is out on the street that if you can spend your summer at the C and have a wonderful time. So we service close to three hundred students this year. Uh it was, it was in kindergarten, well, students that just completed kindergarten through grade twelve. It was a wonderful uh opportunity for them. Uh we had, you know, wonderful support from our our uh colleagues at the fire department, at the Easton Fire Department, Easton Police Department that came and visited our students. Um and, you know, actually let them sit in trucks. So I'd love to share with you some of, you know, some more of the opportunities that the students had. I can ask some of our coordinators to come and present to you if that's something you're interested in and the activities that they do and the progress that they made. Um but I again, I've I know I've said this multiple times, I just wanna shout out again to our fabulous coordinators, Megan St. Martin um and Rita Pastore, who coordinated the K to five program. Amy Mean and Abby Boyd, who coordinated the six or eight program. And Stephanie San Pietro and Ryan Ring, who coordinated the um nine through twelve program. So it was a great, it was, it was wonderful, very successful. I actually was away for two weeks of that time because I was at my doctoral program and they didn't even call me once, so it was, it was amazing. They're, they're really, they're excellent leaders in our district and we're very lucky to have them. So um but I was keeping up to date because they kept sending me emails of all the pictures and and all the progress that the kids were making, which was great. Um and then the other thing that I just wanted to share with you is that we are getting ready for the start of the school year, my office with curriculum and and instruction. Um we are as you know, implementing the Wit and Wisdom Literacy Program. So that is a huge undertaking and we are getting ready for that and trying to make sure that teachers have all the materials that they have in time for the start of school. They are here. We're just separating them all and handing them out to everybody. So we do have them um. And we are grades K through six are in full implementation. And our grade seven ELA teachers will be piloting Wit and Wisdom this year and they are going to do a year-long pilot of the program to see if it's a great, if it's a good fit for them. And uh we're really excited about that because they will be participating alongside of their colleagues. And then lastly, we are going to be implementing a another pilot for intervention in grades four through um four through eight. The program is called Just Words, so we are getting that ready. Um there was a small cost to the pilot program, however, a lot, all the professional development and the um the um and the resources for assessments are being provided to us at no cost. We are, because we are um the Wilson, Wilson Company will be actually doing a study with our, with our data and how we are implementing. So because of that, we did not have to pay for a lot of the um implementation of it. So that will be really exciting. It is aligned with that, with um Wilson, which is the vendor for foundations. Um they're very aligned with Wit and Wisdom, so we are really excited about the trajectory of the possibilities and this intervention, how it's aligned with the science of reading um to fill those gaps for our students. Um and we're excited about the progress that they make. So that's what we have at this time. Um if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Committee members, any questions?
Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Who did you say Just Words was being piloted?
Grades four through eight.
Four through eight, okay.
Yes, it is a, it is a four through twelve intervention. Um we have, we are just starting our intervention process up at the high school, so we are letting that be built before we we bring in a program um of such to them for the pilot period. Um so we're, we're starting first at four through eight and then we'll see if it's, if it would be a good program for us to then pilot at the high school.
Is that just with select teachers incorporate or is that?
Yeah, so what happens is the entire grade will get assessed. Every student will get assessed. Um it is a, it's a quick five-minute assessment and then it gets, and then the, by looking at that data, it gets narrowed down and then another group, the, the a smaller group will get a different assessment to narrow down the need. And then once we get down to um individual assessment where it's the the um assessor and the student one-on-one, we then will determine um who is best for this intervention. So there's a range that the s- the students will have to fall within in order to receive this intervention. Um and obviously, parents will be notified um whether or not their children will be a part of the intervention. Um and it's, it's very, very structured, which is great. And the focus is on the um the phonics portion and the decoding um that we are finding there might be gaps with um as students enter forth and continue through middle school with. So it's not necessarily like an intervention for comprehension. Students will still, if they do fall into comprehension, you know, if that's an area of need for them and they fall into a need for that intervention, they will still receive that intervention. This is a very specific intervention for students who need a very specific skill set.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. It all sounds great.
Thanks.
All right, so on to school committee notes. Uh Michelle, do you have anything?
Well, just a couple of quick things. Uh the marching band has started band camp. It's just so exciting and they're gearing up for their Tigerama um on the twenty first, so everyone save the date. That's gonna be a wonderful event. And um I've just secured them to also uh be in the holiday parade, which will be December third. Um I'm part of the Lions Planning Steering Committee for that. Um and I went through as a member of the uh HRC, the representative for HRC. Um I went through and I updated all the holiday dates and I submitted that to um one of the other members to just to make sure all the formatting was fine. I'm waiting to get that back and I'll get that to you. Our goal was to have that to you by August thirtieth. Um and so I'm checking to make sure that that's still gonna happen. And the other thing is part of the representative for HRC is um I'm, and I talked to Carol about this very briefly today, but I am gonna reach out to her because we'd like to have her come and meet with the HRC committee at one of the meetings and just kind of talk, you know, let her know what we do. Have her introduce herself to them and just kind of start that partnership off um on a positive foot. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy, do you have anything this week?
Um so thank you very much, Dr. Crawling, um Ms. Pruitt, for inviting us to the co- uh conference that you had. It was um nice to hang out with you guys today. Um a lot of good ideas going on, a lot of things to get done, but I think it will happen. Um the other thing I did wanna bring up, really doesn't have anything to do with school, but congratulations to the Little League from Easton who didn't get on the news like the Canton kids did. But they were in the Cal Ripken Baseball Tournament and they were out in Missouri for ten days playing baseball and they did really well. They uh lost, of course, it's a double elimination. So they ended up losing their second game, but um great job to them and um, you know, it's just quite an accomplishment when Little Eastern gets a town, uh gets to play in a a national game, so that was fun. Chrissy knows my love for baseball. We hit, we share that. So anyway, and uh looking forward to Sunday, so everybody come and visit Blade Chains on Sunday.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Jackie, do you have any updates this week?
Um nothing other than reiterating, please come by on Sunday. Um we have some great food. We have ice cream and we're gonna have some uh all kinds of fun games and entertainers with families and come see our beautiful school and I think Lauren has a big surprise.
Okay, all right. So Lauren?
Well, on that note, um so in addition to our beautiful new school on Sunday, um All Town um Coffee Truck Trailer will be there and they are offering free coffee and ice, free iced coffee and all of the fixings.
Wow, that's so generous.
Super generous. Um and they were very excited to um they're, they're very supportive of the schools and um wanna help the schools in any possible way that they can and um so shout out to all And so shout out to All Town.
That's amazing. I knew they were coming. I had no idea they had made such a generous offer. Thank you.
So I just received confirmation, so I wanted to share that. So that was my big news. But I also want to invite and encourage everyone to attend the Select Board Meeting that is going to be on Monday evening, where there will be a very important and informative presentation on, to discuss the potential new public works project. And the financial implication will be for the town. And so I urge you all to attend if you are able.
Okay, all right, great. Well, that's, that was a fun update. And thank you for the reminder of the Select Board Meeting. I had, I had actually forgotten to put that in my notes, so I'm glad that you covered it. All right, so I think, again, other than just reiterating of looking forward to seeing everybody at the ribbon cutting, the management conference being, being there today was always so helpful. So we appreciate that you always include us in, in the conference and have a chance to work with the leadership team and learn more about what you're, what you're doing and planning. And that insight's always really valuable as a school committee member. And the Advisory Committee meeting earlier this week was another really, it was well-attended for a summer meeting. So I think there were 15-ish people there. It was, it was a lot. We have really, really good attendance for that, your superintendent advisory committee meeting this week. So thank you to all of our community partners who are so engaged and committed to showing up even on a Monday afternoon in August.
We don't, we don't typically have summer meetings. And in June, they asked if we could meet in August. And I know they're a committed bunch, but I have to say, I wasn't 100% sure many of them would show up. And they really did. There were, I think, three people were absent and we had new members come. So it was fantastic. And we're very much looking forward to continuing to work together to try to share what's going on in the schools, learn and be advised by what's happening in the community and create some initiatives that we think people are going to enjoy.
Such good stuff. Also looking forward to the new staff orientation. So several school committee members will be there on Wednesday morning at 9:00. And then by the time we meet again, which will be on September 7th, so on September 7th, we will be back in the Simmons Lecture Hall using a hybrid meeting format for, for committee members and presenters. That meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. We will 100% have all technology smooth and working and it'll be seamless and amazing.
Wow.
So a little, little work, little work between now and then to get there. But we have, we have faith and it's going to be great. And yeah, so by the time we have that meeting, school will be open. And yeah, we'll kick off the 2023, 2024 school year. And we will wish Chrissy good luck with, with sending hers, her oldest, off to school. So I know that's a big transition you've got coming up too. So good luck with that. It's, it's a big deal. So we'll be, we'll be cheering for you.
That means a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so next item on the agenda then is I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for SPEA, Southeastern Public Employees Association, Secretarial Clerical, Custodian and Food Service Unions and the units and Unit A Focus Block Memorandum of Agreement. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Let's a little good second.
And roll call vote?
Your answer is yes.
To a good yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Oh, there we go. All right, so, so I will see you all in exec session. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.